Leading is the color of Mr. Scotty Wallace. He'll lead the point of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Scotty. We need a roll call to determine if we've got a form.
Older person, fruit?
Here.
Tepley?
Here.
McCarthy?
Here.
Culver?
Aye.
Walters?
Here.
Melby?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Cairns?
Here.
You have a form.
Mr. Joyce, was this meeting properly noticed?
Yes, sir.
All right, next item is approval of the minutes. Once the council's taken a moment to review those, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
I'll make the motion to advance.
We have the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Walters. Is there any discussion of the minutes? All in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Next item is approval of the agenda. Please let me know.
I'm sorry.
If there are any items that need to be removed.
Mayor?
Yep.
My apologies. Technical difficulties. Can I get the motion for the?
For the minutes?
Minutes again.
Mr. Wallace.
And second was?
Ms. Walters.
All right. My apologies.
All right. All set?
All set.
Okay. Next on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Discussion with the city administrator. I know there are two items that need to come off, number 13 and number 19. 19 was discussed in finance. 13, we will be meeting two weeks from tonight to cover that. That date cannot be moved. So just so everyone knows, the next council meeting, special session, will take place two weeks from tonight. We'll cover that when we get further down, but that one's coming off. Any other amendments?
I believe 14 needs to come off.
Okay. Is that correct? Mr. Wallace, number 14. Okay, take that off. Anything else? Okay, then entertain a motion to approve the agenda with items 13, 14, and 19 revoked. Motion for Mr. Culver, is there a second?
A second.
Second from Ms. Tepley. Any discussion of the agenda? All in favor of approving tonight's revised agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, agenda's approved. Next item is mayor and older person's committee, commission, board reports and comments or items to be discussed at a future meeting. Sue Fruit? Oh, right, sorry. I'll come back to it since I'm there. Sue Fruit?
I'm sorry.
Anything for tonight?
No, I don't, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Karen Tepley?
Just one thing tonight. A couple of weeks ago, I attended a breakfast that the Partners for Prevention put on. And I would just like to invite them to speak before council. Just a wrap-up of that meeting that took place. I think there's a lot of really good information presented by some good students in the Ithaca Central Center area. Future meeting.
Thank you. That's good stuff.
Yeah.
Mr. McCarthy? Mr. Culver?
Yes, I do. I don't want to preempt your lecture on the next meeting, but I believe the way the statute will run is that we will convene council at the next meeting. Then we will adjourn, sign aye, and then the new council will be seated. Now, the lack of space between there is important because otherwise we would have a spat of time in which we would have an ubiquitous anarchy.
Thank you for that, Mr. Culver. Mr. Cairns is looking at wasn't ubiquitous.
Anarchy. We had two words today.
Okay. So in other words, what you're saying is at the meeting in two weeks that we would begin the meeting with the council as a discriminatory form. And then at some point in the evening, that would adjourn and the second meeting would begin with the new ones. Thank you, Mr. Culver.
Is that ready?
Okay. But we could certainly do it that way. Honestly, in the four years I've been down here, I've never seen that happen.
Why don't we ask the lawyer if that's what it's supposed to happen?
We'll have to look it up.
Okay.
We'll be preparing for that meeting after today, but I can look it up.
Mr. Jones, are the city police prepared for an ubiquitous anarchy? Okay, we're good.
Okay.
We're all right. We're all right. Okay. Anything else from Mr. Culver tonight?
No.
Okay. Everything from planning that we need to talk about is actually on the agenda. So I'll move on to Ms. Walters.
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Kevin Melby?
Nothing tonight.
Scotty Wallace?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
All right. And Ryan Cairns?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Got it. Okay, I got a backup. City and utility department had reports and concerns. Mr. Billy Jones, anything for us tonight?
Negative, sir.
Mr. Wes Brenner?
I will pass, thank you.
How was your trip to Miami?
Long.
You drove that?
Right.
How long's it take to get to Miami?
It took us about 30 hours each direction.
Would you drive it again?
Not a bad time.
That's what I thought. I have a feeling. So for anyone who does not know, what I'm going to do is allow an introduction here. We've contracted with Verbecker to handle zoning. Mr. Perry? Swing that camera.
I need to do my hair.
There you go. Tell the folks who you are, sir.
Good evening. My name is Mark Stewart. I am with Verbecker Associates and I am under contract to do zoning administration work with the city as well as a zoning ordinance update for it. But my past history is that a city administrator for the city of Elroy for six years and in zoning and local government for over 20 years.
Glad to have you here, sir. Your report that you gave at the plan commission was outstanding the other night.
I'll do it tonight, too.
It was a nice step forward. Everybody was talking to me about it. You know, seriously, I'm glad you're here. Okay. And we'll move over here. Mr. Dave Fry?
All I would like to report is TC Networks is done with cameras. Cameras are up and going and working well.
Okay, so let's back that up. Would you please hand him the microphone, Mr. Joyce? Let's cover that. Say that again, and then I have a question.
I would like to report that TC Networks has got all cameras installed, community centers, swimming pool, parks, and they are up and going and working well with a little adjustment that me and Ashley will make after she's onboard with it. We will see where we want to turn certain cameras. We have something we'd like to tweak. But otherwise, they're working very well and they did a very good job.
Okay, so what you're saying is in the city parks now, we have security cameras in place that we had not had until now?
Correct.
And they are in the aquatic center? They are in the community center? Where else are they?
They're on the park building, my park shop. They're also on the keeper's shelter. And then we go over to tennis court. I have the camp. The campgrounds are all under camera now. The tennis courts are under camera and all the shelters on that site that we cannot see or the diet are all on camera.
That's outstanding news. Thanks. Anybody have any questions or comments for Dave? Thank you. Mr. Aaron Joyce, there was something you were working on today?
Yes.
I believe there's an election.
There is an election.
All right. How's that going?
Pretty well. Last word, which was about 10 minutes ago, was we had a 44% turnout thus far. So if you haven't voted, still have a little bit of time, but.
So we had some later. When I called Aaron today, it must have been close to 4 o'clock and we were at 37%. So you got some people a little later in the day?
We did.
Okay.
Yep. It was a steady flow of participants, voters today. But, you know, I think that the poll workers that we have got everybody through pretty quickly. So there was hardly any waiting for anybody. So pretty pleased with how things have been going today.
It was a breeze when I voted. Everything was handled really well. And so nicely thank you to you, your staff, and all the volunteers.
Thank you.
Again, as always.
Thank you.
Ms. Oliphant, anything for us tonight?
Just a couple of things. So if you, council, have your old tablets and charger and would like to turn them in tonight, I would gladly receive them. On April 20th, we are working very hard to hold an open house regarding the story field development. So April 20th, we're looking at 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM and then again 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. So it's an opportunity for anyone in the public, you all, to come here and learn more about the work that Verbecker did in concept planning and the RFP process that we'll be going through in order to have some development occur there and provide some feedback. So we are planning for that. Jason and I are working to get some information out on social media, in the paper and on the radio and all of that. And I believe Chris was going to bring pizza then, too.
It should probably be reported that Mr. McGowell brought pizza tonight, Mr. Joyce.
And then I just have one other thing. We do have a job announcement on the website for the Public Works Director. So the city is seeking applicants for the position of Public Works Director.
Do you want to back this up a minute, too, Mr. Joyce? Time of the year for dog licenses, right?
You can get a dog license anytime, but yes, I think it's recommended and requested that the dog licenses get obtained by this time of year.
So if you live in the city, the place to do that?
City clerk's office.
And how long is easy process?
Very easy, very inexpensive.
What's it cost to get a dog license?
For a dog that is spayed or neutered, it is $3. For a non-spayed or neutered animal, it is $8.
And it takes a few minutes?
Takes a couple of minutes. We do need information regarding the rabies vaccination that your animal has received. But other than that, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay. Moving along, next would be the treasurer's report from Mr. Joyce.
Okay. This is the treasurer's report for the period ending March 31st, 2023. City general had an ending balance of 363,384. State pool number one had an ending balance of 4,421,265. Our TIP account for Panorama Estates had an ending balance of 99,224. Our business, our left savings account, which we did draw down a little bit for economic development project, had an ending balance of 592,661. Some other accounts of note. The city's room tax account had an ending balance of 16,642. And also Greater Richland Tourism, which includes city dollars and then dollars from townships that are involved in that program, had an ending balance of 21,969. Any questions?
Questions or comments for you, Mr. Joyce? Okay. In that case, I'll entertain a motion to approve the treasurer's report. Motion by Mr. Wallace, is there a second?
No second.
Second by Sue Fruit. Any discussion of the treasurer's report? The hearing now will need a roll call for that, please.
Older person, fruit?
Aye.
Tepley?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Culver?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Wallace?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Next is payment of the bills while the council reviews the bills. It is my duty to read the following report and recommendation committee on finance and budget regarding the bills presented to the common council Tuesday, April 4th, 2023, filed in the office of the city clerk treasurer to the common council of the city of Richland, Southern Wisconsin. The matter of the bills presented on 4/4/23, having been referred from the committee on finance and budget and said committee have duly investigated these bills, hereby make the following recommendation to the council that the bills presented on 4/4/2023 be paid with the following adjustments and/or exceptions that are unlisted. It is signed by all three members of the finance and budget committee. When the council has read through the bills, we will entertain a motion to pay them.
I'll make the motion to pay the bills.
Motion from Karen Tepley, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Melanie Walters. Any discussion of the bills? Okay. Hearing now will need a roll call.
Older person, Tepley?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Culver?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Wallace?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Fruit?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Next item, item for public hearing on conditional use permit to allow for the operation of an electric motor repair shop on tax parcel 022-2744-1100, located at 26788 County Highway O in the extraterritorial zone. This was reviewed at planning and as it was recommended to come here solar year. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak in a public hearing on a conditional use permit to allow operation of an electric motor repair shop at 26788 County Highway O? Can we get the microphone, please? Would you please stand and introduce yourself and then tell us what you've got to say?
Hi, I'm John Felsted, owner of Jet's Electric Motors. I just, I don't know what to say. We have electric motor shop that have been operating almost two years. I currently rent right now. I purchased the property that has spoken of, but I want to move my shop up there and have my own shop.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to say? You don't have to. It's okay. Is there anyone else? Okay. By the follow state statute, I've got to ask this three times. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in a public hearing on a conditional use permit to allow for the operation of an electric motor repair shop on tax parcel 022-2744-1100 at 26788 County Highway O? Okay. Last attempt. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in the public hearing on conditional use permit to allow for the operation of an electric motor repair shop on tax parcel 022-2744-1100 at 26788 County O in the extraterritorial zone? Okay. There's no one else who would like to speak. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Motion for Mr. Culver, is there a second?
A second.
All right. All in favor of closing the public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, public hearing is closed. So item five is for the council to consider approval of the conditional use permit to allow for the operation of an electric motor repair shop on tax parcel 022-2744-1100 at 26788 County Highway O in the extraterritorial zone. Before we go any further from zoning, any issues with this?
No.
We said this at planning. I just want the whole council to hear that.
Yeah. So I have provided you with a report write-up related to this property. I can present it if you want, but we evaluated the proposal based on the comprehensive plan, the goals of the comprehensive plan, land use strategies identified in there as well as implementation strategies. And then we combined that with the industrial zoning of the extraterritorial district to see if it met the requirements of that. And as such, it does. And then on the second page of the document on this, a series of conditions for this project. You know, one or some conditions as far as consideration. Does the site have reasonable access to roads and highways? It actually has two driveways to get in and out of the property. Is the project site located, designed to minimize traffic congestion and the potential effect on traffic flow? The average daily traffic on that road is 1,200 vehicles per day. So will not have any impacts on that. And then the conditions that the city council may impose are limitations that considered necessary to protect the public health, safety and welfare. And any such conditions or limitations may include a time limit for the conditional use to exist or for the operation or activity permitted by the permit to be carried on. So as a condition set forth would be that the conditional use shall become void one year after it was granted unless within the year the permitted use is actually commenced or within such extension of the period as a city council within the year may provide. Also, the condition use permit when issued is personal to the permantee and the permit shall not be deemed to run of the land. Any transfer of ownership of a lot for which a conditional use permit has been issued, whether legal or equitable, shall automatically terminate and void any previously issued conditional use permit. So it's non-transferable. And the conditional use permit at any time of its issuance contain a limitation to a stated period of time. And upon the expiration of such period, the permit shall be void and the formerly permitted activity must then forthwith cease or it can be set into perpetuity based on the ownership. So the recommendation there is not necessary to set a time limit that it would expire in five or 10 years that is set as perpetuity per the landowner, which is a previous condition. The condition is that the property owner must obtain a sanitary permit for Richland County for a septic system of some type based on soils and the county ordinance. And then we would, after approval by the city council, would be a land use permit issued by the zoning administrator, who then would inform the building inspector that a permit was issued by me and then that they would take the next step to issue a permit for any alterations that the applicant is looking to make. And then that the project must meet the plans and specifications at time of application. So that's in front of you today. Any modifications made during the joint planning commission and ETC board meeting or at the council meeting? So if you have any changes to it, that'd be done now. Just so you're aware, a portion of the property is in the floodplain. So no filling of the floodplain or construction is allowed without permits. It is, it has been previously filled as part of the property and the applicant has no intentions to fill the property. It's all internal work on the building for this project. And then the applicant is responsible for any other federal, state, county or local permits.
Okay. Any questions for zoning?
Yes.
Go ahead, sir.
Section 475.05 (7), is that in the city code or is that state ordinance?
That is city. 475 is the extraterritorial zoning.
Okay. The reason I wanted to raise that, and this is for the council's consideration in the future, is years ago, we got into an argument because we were issuing conditional use permits for two years for businesses in town. And one legal advice was that by state, such conditional uses are granted and run with the property. I suspect that's because if you were going to sell your business, it would be advantaged to the seller to sell his property if the buyer knew that the condition would continue. So I guess I'm asking, but where does the state law stand on this presently?
It is... So there is a time limit associated with conditional uses. Basically, if it's not commenced within the first year, that it's considered void. So that's kind of the first step of it. And after that, if it ceases activity, And after that, if it ceases activity, so once it started and ceases activity for more than the 365 days or a year, same thing, that the conditional use has ceased to exist. And then anybody after that, the property owner authorizing the use must reapply or obtain another conditional use. But as far as, you have to have just reason for setting time limits on it. So you have to have substantial evidence why you'd want to set a time limit on it. And maybe it's things that, in this case, it's hard to say, but there'd have to be some other reason why you would have like a two-year time limit, or a three-year time limit, or a five-year time limit on a conditional use permit. And maybe it would run with any type of like health code permits that you could coincide with that. And like in this case, you wouldn't want to put a time limit on it because you don't have any just reason for doing it. So the state is fairly...
So I pulled up from the League of Wisconsin Municipalities FAQ on this. So variances are permanently attached to the property, whereas conditional use permits generally transfer to the purchaser of a property. However, some communities impose periodic reviews on conditional uses, on the permits. The legality of those limitations have not been clearly established in Wisconsin. Some cases have been considered, but it's just there's not a clear black and white on it.
Yeah, so just from recollection, there are certain situations where you can put time limits on a conditional use permit, and they don't always have to run with the land. And I can't come up with a hypothetical right now. There's some good situations where it's like, look, you can have it for two years because maybe something's going to happen in the future, some kind of event, and at that point in time, it needs to expire, or it needs to be reviewed at that point in time. And Planning Commission would evaluate that and have to cite reasons in, you know, good faith and tie it to why it should be limited. You have to articulate it.
Would it be fair to say then that once the conditional use is granted, that the onus is on the ones who would terminate it? Those we would have to have reason to terminate it?
Yes, that's 100% accurate. Yes, so...
Thank you.
So Mr. McGowan, at Planning, when this was recommended for approval, recommended to go to the council. The motion there stipulated that the recommendation was to approve conditional use permit on the condition that all applicable permits were obtained by the landowner. You feel that should be in the motion from the council, sir?
That's correct.
You feel that should be in the motion? Okay. Entertain a motion, then. Item five for the conditional use permit for the electric motor shop at 26788 Columbia Highway.
I'll move.
For Mr. McGowan's advice on the condition that all applicable permits are obtained by the landowner? Thank you, sir. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Yep, go ahead.
Of the conditions that Mark laid out in the packet, that is certainly one of them, but aside from one C, all of those conditions would be reasonable. So...
Do you want the motion to be amended?
I guess maybe the motion ought to read in compliance with...
With the recommendations from zoning?
Recommendations on Philston, etc.
Recommendations from zoning?
Yeah.
Okay. That's the motion. Should we put that in a second? I don't remember if we do the second.
Second.
Thank you. Do you want to amend your second? Do you include that?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion on this point? Okay, here, now we'll need a roll call, Mr. Joyce.
Older person McCarthy?
Aye.
Culver?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Wallace?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Fruit?
Aye.
Tappley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Next item, consider approval of application. How do I pronounce this? What's the name of your restaurant?
La Fritanga.
That one? All right. Let's see. Thank you very much. LLC for Class B Beer and Class B Liquor License at 1450 Veterans Drive. Why don't we start by making sure they have the microphone in case there are any questions for them, or if you just have any? Well, why don't we start here? Tell us who you are and why you're here. We've met before. Tell us what's going on.
So, hi, everybody. Thank you so much for this. It's very important for us, more than for you, this meeting. Like I mentioned before, I'm Carolina. I'm from Nicaragua. I've been living here for the last 13 years. My husband Carlos, German officially, and our manager and business father, business...
Partner.
Partner business now in La Fritanga, Marlon. He's from Nicaragua too. Carlos is from El Salvador. He refused to say, but he's more from Nicaragua than this country. So what we're doing now is, we love our restaurant. We still work in Los Amigos. Los Amigos is, it's, we've had an extension. Nothing's bad with that. It's just that we see the next, that this town needs another kind of food, another option. The population from our country is definitely growing in this country, in these states, and now in this town and around this area. Before, like three, four years ago, we never ever going to be thinking about opening a Nicaragua restaurant because we're going to be the only customer, pretty much. Right now, we decided to take the opportunity. I feel will be awesome. We call it Latin food because we don't want to scare everybody. Eighty percent of the dishes from our menu, they're from our country, like it says, Nicaragua is a Central American country. You're going to absolutely love it, but we have a lot of dishes for everybody. So don't be scared. We've been working so hard for the last few months, and our team, that we're so proud of them. They're awesome people. They've been working so hard for the last three weeks. Right now, everybody's working. We don't know who want to stop. Maybe we want to stop tomorrow, change our clothes, turn it on the sign. That's the plan. If you say yes or no, because without liquor, we're not going to open. So we're planning to open seven days a week, give the opportunity to this town to have another option. We promote this business not just for people in Richland Center, for people around the area. We now part of the Chamber of Commerce, Latin Chamber of Commerce in Madison. They're supportive of us, and we try to get some people from everywhere, not just from Richland Center. Being in the Ramada is the opportunity to give some food to their guest people, and they give us the opportunity to serve the banquet. So we're planning, and we, actually, we have a few events booked already. So our idea is not just do the restaurant and sell our food, is try to keep the local people local. They can celebrate their parties here, whatever is the celebration or the reason. We're going to try to get and provide the whole event. We're working with some people for telling them like, go to this flower lady, and she going to give you a discount. Or go with this lady for your case, she going to give you a discount. We have a few people already with a menu for decoration. We have a DJ ready for them. We have guy can do, so it's like from bakery. We do a guy, a photographer guy, a video guy. So what we want to do is give the people the opportunity to take the package and stay here in Richland Center. All this business that we want to work with, they're from here. Some of them, actually, they don't have their business before legally. We helping them. Now they have an LLC, so we can work together really good. I have to say, Ramada people, they're being awesome. So if you say yes, we waiting for you. We're going to be open every single day, 10:00 to 9:00 p.m. We just close Thanksgiving, Easter, and Christmas. Other than that, see you tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. If you give me the opportunity, we're going to give you some gift card for each window. And please, it doesn't matter, this is going to be funny. Pretty much every single day, the menu is in Spanish, okay? But then the description is in English. We're still working in a few detail, but just stop by, ask questions, say hi, smell it, just try it. We promise you're going to love it. Thank you.
Would either of the two gentlemen like to add any comments to that? That's a tough act to follow. Okay, all right. So any questions from the council for our guests?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
It's a chance for you to give a commercial on your menu. Years ago, I stopped for breakfast in northern New Mexico, 7:30 in the morning at Lejos Rancheros. Tasted it all day long. It was hot. Do you have anything less hot in your menu?
We do. We do. We're going to have a few options for you guys. We also want to have a hamburger, hamburger and bacon cheeseburger. We're going to have a brothed chicken and...
Steak.
Steak. Steak.
We're working, it's not on the menu, but some weekend, hopefully, this, maybe not this weekend, because it's there, but the next one, we're going to have a tomahawk. We have six options for burger. We have fried fish, and then we have a special menu for senior people. We're trying to think about a little bit of everything. So like I said, just go over there. If the menu is something that you like, promise to you, I'm going to find something for you.
Nothing is spicy, right?
Nothing is spicy.
Even if you want to try, if you're from Nicaragua, you still want to find something from here.
Yeah.
Okay, so if the older persons haven't seen yet, in your packet is a letter that was signed by Jenny Copronon, Jennifer Copronon. She and her husband currently hold the liquor license for the alcohol license for this property, and she voluntarily surrendering that. If you have any questions there? Mr. Jones, any concerns at all?
No, sir.
Okay. Then I will entertain a motion to approve application from...
La Fritanga.
La Fritanga LLC for Class B Beer and Class B Liquor License at 1450 Veterans Drive.
I'll move.
Mr. Melby with the motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Second from Ms. Tappley. Any further discussion? Okay, here we go. We'll have a roll call, please.
Older person Culver?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Wallace?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Fruit?
Aye.
Tappley?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item seven, picnic license. We've got four of these coming. Mr. Wallace?
Actually, Kevin, the...
Kevin's going to do that. Mr. Melby?
So the first one we have, picnic license is for Taste of Hills Event, June 17th, 2023. Business as usual, same as it has been in the past. Their hours...
So if I'm reading this right, we have four picnic licenses going, all four for the chamber at four different events? So this is?
Yes, there are three Midsummer Night Markets, and then the Taste of Hills would be the first one that's on the agenda.
Okay, and so, Mr. Melby, what you're telling us is that this was recommended from the Public Safety Committee?
Correct.
Would you like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion. Do we do them separately, or all four together?
There are all four liquor licenses, or I'm sorry, picnic licenses. If you want to include the dates and what they are, I think we could do that as a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the picnic licenses for the Richland Chamber of Commerce for Taste of Hills on June 17th, 2023. The Midsummer's Night Market on July 21st, 2023. Midsummer Night Market, August 18th, 2023. And the last one is Midsummer Night Market is for September 15th, 2023.
Okay, motion from Mr. Melby to approve before picnic licenses for the Greater Richland Area Chamber. Is there a second?
A second.
Second from Ms. Walters. Any discussion? Mr. Jones, I assume no concerns again?
No concerns at these, no.
Okay, thanks. Any further discussion?
Kevin, did you want to maybe mention the location change from...
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. The Midsummer Night Markets were at the depot, and they are being moved to the Community Center Park, not the same location as the Taste of Hills. Better parking access.
Do me a favor, say that closer to your mouth.
Yes, sorry. The Midsummer Night Markets this year are moving from the depot location to the community center for more parking, better access, and things like that. Same location as the Taste of Hills.
Okay, we have the motion and the second to approve the picnic licenses for the Greater Richland Area Chamber. Is there any further discussion? Okay, let's have a roll call, please.
Older person Walters?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Wallace?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Fruit?
Aye.
Tappley?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Culver?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 11, submission of notice of withdrawal from structural document related to economic development. This has been going, an ongoing discussion, several meetings that took place involve members of the city government, county government, and the Red Board. And the story is that in December, the city council voted to provide notice to the county of intent for the city to withdraw from the structural document related to economic development. That agreement requires 90 days to pass from that submission of notice to the point, the time when the actual vote can be taken for the city to decide whether or not to act on that and make that choice, and that's where we are tonight. Is there anything you would like to add, Ms. Oldman?
The 90-day period allows for negotiation. And so as the mayor indicated, we exercised that 90-day period with three meetings and an intent for ongoing discussions, but certainly about other matters where there's some collaboration between the city and the county. But at this point, there's not been any amendment or new contract produced as a result of those meetings. So there is a resolution associated with this authorizing the issuance of the notice of withdrawal to the county, which would then dissolve that agreement between the city and the county, which established the position of economic development.
Okay, so as Ashley just alluded to, there is a resolution in your packet, which, I'll just read it. Resolution by common council and city Richland Center authorizing the submission of a notice of withdrawal from the structural document. Whereas the city of Richland Center and Richland County jointly established the position of economic development director through the adoption of the structural document. Whereas it is uncertain whether or when the county will have the ability to provide long-term financial contributions as dictated by the structural document. And whereas, given the financial uncertainty, the city took action to safeguard the future of the Economic Development Department by assuming full responsibility. And whereas, after careful deliberation, the city issued a notice of intent to withdraw effective 1/123. And whereas designated members from the common council, county board of supervisors, and Richland Economic Development Board have fulfilled their obligation to meet jointly to negotiate a new or amended collaborative agreement. And whereas, after 90 days of service of the notice of intent to withdraw, the city may issue a notice of withdrawal to officially terminate the structural document and allow the Economic Development Director to assume employment under the city. And whereas, the city will continue to support and promote economic development within Richland County following the submission of the notice of withdrawal. And whereas, up to and following the effective date of the notice of withdrawal, the city is willing to convene with the county board, supervisors, and members of the Red Board to negotiate avenues for continued partnership and support of economic development. And now therefore be a result, the members of the common council do hereby authorize issuing Richland County a notice of withdrawal from the structural document effective 4/4/2023. Okay, that is the resolution that is currently under consideration by the council. So is there any discussion on this point? It's been talked about many times, but anyone on the council, anything else to say on this? Mr. Brenninger, did you want to address the council? You don't have to, but I...
I'm not quite as effervescent as La Fritanga. I appreciate that you're opening up. I will be there to be one of your patrons soon. Looking forward to that. That's great that you're doing that. So I'm here in my last few moments of Richland Economic Development Board Chair. I'm a little bit sad to see this effort end after, for me, it's been about a seven-year process of bringing about a collaboration between the city and the county and the creation of the Red Board. Lots of things that I still aspire to see happen in the city and the county in terms of economic development, and I'm, of course, concerned whether those things will take place or not. I do think there was another pathway forward to preserve the collaboration and continue the Red Board, but that seems to not be happening, and that's part of my sadness, is unable to persuade the city council to consider other pathways. I think the couple important things to look at is this is not just a transition of a position, it is also the ending of a collaboration, of an agreement between the city and county. It's the ending of an 11-member board that has worked diligently for the last three and a half years to try and bring about reasoned economic development in the area. So I'm concerned about that. I hope that it will go well with the city taking this action. I'm very concerned that it will not. Part of that is because as this position becomes a city government position, it is more and more likely to fall into institutional processing rather than active economic development, which has already been part of the drift of the position. I'm sad to say that, but we have things that need to take place desperately. For example, a single-family housing subdivision is the number one issue in economic development, and we have been unable to make even one step of progress forward in three and a half years. That is of grave concern to me that that's not going on in the city. There are some houses that are being built in townships. That's not the same as having a single-family dwelling. So I'm saying this to kind of say farewell, but I'm not leading economic development. I certainly plan to stay engaged, even though there will no longer be an Economic Development Board, and we will not have, I will not have a role in giving any kind of direction to economic development. I wish you would have taken a different pathway and extended this out a little farther and considered continuing collaboration and the maintaining of the Red Board, but it seems like that's done. So I'm saying it's being turned over to you, and now it's your responsibility what happens with this, and I hope, I really do hope that it goes well. I hope that it prospers. So thank you for the time, and I'm stepping down after your vote.
Thank you, Mr. Brenninger. Anyone else with any comments?
Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Walters.
So I would just like to let everybody on the council know a little info of what happened at our last joint meeting with the county. One of the things that the county had talked about was they would still like to stay involved in economic development. Obviously, they're reducing their funding for it, but they had kind of hashed around the idea of perhaps hiring a staff, a county staff member that could complement Jason's position. And so there were ideas that were thrown around by them of maybe an economic development assistant, maybe a grant writer. So I just wanted to let everybody on the council know that at the last meeting, I got the impression from the county, they still would like to stay involved in economic development. They're just kind of looking, looking at what their end of that is going to be, and then how that would complement Jason coming to the city full-time. So I just wanted to make everybody aware of that.
Thank you, and I agree with that. And the county was represented at that meeting by county board chair Marty Brewer and by county board supervisor Ken Rennish. And basically, what Melanie just said, we said to them, and they said to us. And there were members of the Red Board there. Mr. Brenninger was one of them, and they were involved in these conversations too. And just personal opinion, I don't think anyone involved should take this as a criticism or the closing of a door. It's a change. It's a reshape, but nobody said good ideas should not be advanced. And I don't care who has a good idea. We should hear it. We should work on it. Okay, at this point, entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance as red. Do we have that number? We don't? Okay, so to adopt the ordinance as I read it...
Resolution.
Resolution.
Resolution, sorry. As I read it pertaining to withdrawal from the Economic Development Agreement.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Okay, we'll need a roll call.
Older person Melby?
Aye.
Wallace?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Fruit?
Aye.
Tappley?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Culver?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, that means that's on to item 12, transfer of employer of record for Economic Development Director position. Ashley, you and I'll land that.
Yes. So now that that motion just carried, we have the matter of transitioning the employer of record for the position of Economic Development Director. I've met with the county administrator. Together, we created the transition plan that you have attached in your packet. We've outlined several things that we need to address to include equipment, as well as how we will handle things like vacation balance and sick leave balance. So all of those items are outlined in your packet with both what the county would do as well as what the city would do in relation to those. We've also listed some open county projects that the director will continue to work on until complete regardless of the action here tonight, as well as a summary of what occurred at the Personnel and Insurance Committee when we reviewed this, and a little note about the Collaborative Relations Team, which has already been discussed. In your cover sheet, you will see that we are transitioning employer of record. We are not creating a new position. We are not filling a vacant position. So our hiring policies do not really adequately address the sort of situation that we're in right now. However, because this is a change, there is that element of it addressed within the motion. And then, as well as that transition plan. So the requested action would be to approve transitioning the Economic Development Director from, the employer of record from the county to the city, waiving a formal hiring process as that would entail advertising the position, conducting interviews, et cetera, as well as then implementing the transition plan that you have before you. So with that, lasted with that transition plan, this was the framework. The county administrator is presenting that to his decision-makers, and they may have some... to the city, waiving a formal hiring process, as that would entail advertising the position and conducting interviews, et cetera, as well as then implementing the transition plan that you have before you. So with that, lastly, with that transition plan, this was the, the framework. The county administrator is presenting that to, to his decision-makers and they may have some thoughts or some proposed changes to it, but as good as we could for the moment, they're meeting tonight and discussing it. So we'll know more if there's any deviation from it.
Okay, Mr. McGowan, as Ashley just said, it's kind of a unique circumstance and our hiring policy doesn't address this directly because it's kind of unique. Any issues with proceeding this way?
No, there are no statutory issues with this at all. I think it is appropriate. And obviously, the council has a vote whether or not to forego that process.
Okay, then for item 12, is any other questions before I open this for a motion? Any questions on this at all? Okay. In that case, we'll entertain a motion, transfer economic development director position from employer of record county to employer of record city. Is there more that you need in that motion?
Uh, common waiving a formal hiring process for the position and implementing the transition plan.
Okay, seeking a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion from Ms. Tepley, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Walters, any discussion?
Do we need a suspension of the rules?
Do you want to suspend the rules and wait for reading? Is that what you're asking for?
Well, I'm asking if we need one in this case.
No, it's a policy.
Okay.
I thought the same, the new ground rules, but I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, good question. That's why I was asking Chris. That's a good question. Okay, any other discussion? All right, we'll need a roll call, please.
Alderperson Wallace.
Aye.
Karen's.
Aye.
Fruit.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Culver.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Glassbrenner, you know, a city employee, mob and bar hitter in the classroom over there. Okay, we skipped 13 and 14, we're both removed. Item 15, ordinance amendment to chapter 101.25 8A of the Code of Ordinances relating to the operation of bicycles on public sidewalks. Ms. Tepley, please tell us about this.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, there's a group of people that got together. Once we heard that there was some issues with possibility of someone being hurt by both pedestrians and bicycles on downtown sidewalks. So, myself along with Kelly Capronal, representing downtown, and Stacy Pillar, representing the library board, or I'm sorry, the library, as well as the bike safety that she puts on, and then also Jody Meaden from Parks and Rec. So, like I say, in your packet, you will see the information there. So what we would like to do is, we have a graphic that was designed by Craig Rogers, and we would like to have that printed on 11 by 17 and eight and a half by 11 posters. And they would be distributed to the downtown businesses. And so basically, the financial, the graphic will also be used in marketing for the community bike safety program, as well as in social media and that type of thing through Parks and Rec for, for their programs. Financial impact on this would be a total of $541. And the funding source would be from economic development. So what we're asking for is for council, for a motion, so my motion would be to, first of all, amend the ordinance 101.25 8A, number seven, to be removed. That's on Jefferson Street between Mill and Seminary Street. That would be the first motion.
Okay, there's a motion from Ms. Tepley to amend the ordinance, removing the space, the length from Jefferson Street between, on Jefferson Street between Mill and Seminary from the ordinance that prohibited bike riding downtown. So there's the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Mr. Melby, any discussion on that one?
I have a question.
Yes?
Um, is this going to be inclusive of skateboards? Because we have issues with skateboards during sidewalks.
It's all, it's all wheels. It's on the graphic that was provided. You'll see a bicycle and a scooter and a skateboard.
On the ordinance, which we're amending an existing ordinance. This isn't a new ordinance. This pertains specifically to bicycles. I don't know what year, this is done many years ago. So this ordinance is about bikes. So it's-
That's true.
Okay, but for the moment, we're amending that. Okay?
Okay.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have anything else you want to say about skateboards downtown since you brought it up?
Just that there's a lot of kids when there's breaks, spring break, summer break, whatever, that ride the skateboards and they go the right way and they go the wrong way. It doesn't make any difference to them and they don't care.
Would you like the safety committee to consider that?
Yes.
Future agenda item, public safety, skateboards downtown, there you go. Okay, any further discussion on Karen? And we had the motion and the second, correct? We did get the second?
Aye.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Please.
Okay, so it's Jefferson Street between Mill and Seminary, correct?
Correct.
My only concern with this would be removing this is what if there, what about future development? I'm just thinking because like Mr. Ferguson owns almost an entire block down there, he may want to develop it in the future. There could be the possibility that there could be more retail businesses down on Jefferson Street. So then are we looking to come back and re-amend our ordinance, saying, okay, now we have retail spaces down there, you can't ride your bikes or your skateboards or scooters or whatever on this street again? So that's the only thing I'm thinking of, is there is the potential that there could be future development on that street. Is, or would we be coming back in X number of years and redoing this again?
We would if there was an issue or you wanted to make sure that didn't happen. Because then it would not be included in the existing ordinance.
That was my only concern, was just if there's, because there, if there's future development. And we say, okay, we're going to take this out, you can ride your bikes up and down. And then say in the next five years, there's some buildings that are put up down there or some new businesses. And all of a sudden, those business owners are saying, hey, I don't want people riding their skateboards or their bicycles on the sidewalks in front of my business. But if we change this, they can do that. That's, that's my only concern I wanted to bring up.
Yes, sir.
I think the reasoning was, when we considered this, was that we needed to, if we were going to prohibit bicycle riding on the sidewalks, especially for younger kids, we needed to provide some pathway for them to get downtown. I think that was the conversation. And this will seem to be the least traffic obstructive street. So that's why it was recommended to remove Mill and Seminary, which could always be altered in the future.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we have the motion and the second. We'll need a roll call, though.
Okay, are you ready for your roll call?
Yes, we'll need a roll call, though.
Alderperson Wallace.
Aye.
Karen's.
Aye.
Fruit.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Culver.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, before we move on, Ms. Fruit raised the valid point about skateboards. Mr. McGowan looked, and bicycle ordinance is 101.25, 101.24. Would you read that headline, what that, what that goes?
Regulation of skateboards, roller skates, roller skis and play vehicles. And it looks like it lists the same, was it seven?
They basically restrict it in the same place as the bicycles were. So now, they don't match just for record, because the one for roller blades and skateboards and play vehicles would still includes that area that we just took off for bikes. But it is already there. And I don't know now if we want to put that in any of the sign. You guys can talk about that.
Well, in the graphic, there is a bicycle, a scooter and a skateboard. So the idea behind Walk Your Wheels is all wheels. So hopefully, a visual will give, like I say, the kids and adults to like the idea of walking. And that was, like I say, kind of the point, you know, the main street and the streets are, you know, not safe enough for young kids to be on there. So then parents say, well then, go to the sidewalk. But then the kids don't think enough to walk their wheels and not ride their bikes. So that's, that's the gist behind this is just be a little safer and walk your bike, scooter or skateboard.
All right, that leads us on to finance committee recommendations. Mr. Ryan, Karen's.
Item 16.
Wait, wait, hold on, hold on. We do have the second part.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right, there's a second part.
Second part.
That's right.
Second part is we're asking to accept the quote from Rogers Create in the amount of $300 for the design graphic and a quote from Shoping X-Press Printing in the amount of $241.
I will cover that on item 18.
Yeah, I see it. I was going to say, that's not on item 15, I see it. We're okay, though. Okay, go ahead, Ryan.
Go for it.
No problem. Item 16, street park and salt purchase. Terry Nelson, street superintendent, is buying salt again from the county, discussed at finance. My motion would be to approve the purchase of salt from Richland County Highway Department in the amount of $31,859.82.
Okay, motion from Mr. Karen's, is there a second?
A second.
Was that Sue?
Karen, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Okay, we'll need a roll call.
Alderperson Karen's.
Aye.
Fruit.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Culver.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, that leads us on to item 12, transfer of employer of record for economic development director position. Ashley, you and I will land that.
Yes. So now that, that motion just carried, we have the matter of transitioning the employer of record for the position of economic development director. I've met with the county administrator. Together, we created the transition plan that you have attached in your packet. We've outlined several things that we need to address to include equipment, as well as how we will handle things like vacation balance and sick leave balance. So all of those items are outlined in your packet with both what the county would do as well as what the city would do in relation to those. We've also listed some open county projects that the director will continue to work on until complete regardless of the action here tonight, as well as a summary of what occurred at the Personnel Insurance Committee when we reviewed this, and a little note about the Collaborative Relations Team, which has already been discussed. In your cover sheet, you will see that we are transitioning employer of record. We are not creating a new position, we're not filling a vacant position. So our hiring policies do not really adequately address the sort of situation that we're in right now. However, because this is a change, there is that element of it addressed within the motion. And then, as well as that transition plan. So the requested action would be to approve transitioning the economic development director from, the employer of record from the county to the city, waiving a formal hiring process, as that would entail advertising the position and conducting interviews, et cetera, as well as then implementing the transition plan that you have before you. So with that, lastly, with that transition plan, this was the, the framework. The county administrator is presenting that to, to his decision-makers and they may have some thoughts or some proposed changes to it, but as good as we could for the moment, they're meeting tonight and discussing it. So we'll know more if there's any deviation from it.
Okay, Mr. McGowan, as Ashley just said, it's kind of a unique circumstance and our hiring policy doesn't address this directly because it's kind of unique. Any issues with proceeding this way?
No, there are no statutory issues with this at all. I think it is appropriate. And obviously, the council has a vote whether or not to forego that process.
Okay, then for item 12, is any other questions before I open this for a motion? Any questions on this at all? Okay. In that case, we'll entertain a motion, transfer economic development director position from employer of record county to employer of record city. Is there more that you need in that motion?
Uh, common waiving a formal hiring process for the position and implementing the transition plan.
Okay, seeking a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion from Ms. Tepley, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Walters, is there a second? All in favor of adjourned tonight's meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please, meeting is adjourned.